I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, March 26, 2019, here at the Middle High School Library. I'd ask everybody to please stand for this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, hearing of visitors, would anybody like to address the committee on anything on tonight's agenda? Moving on, the first order of business is a resolution in support of full funding for our public schools. This is, I'm starting to get it wrong, a joint resolution with the AEA. They've approached us and asked us about supporting, basically just to support full funding from the state for our public schools. Within there it gives that Abington would get an additional $472,500 in additional state aid if it was fully funded, so basically we're just, it's a motion, it's a resolution for more money for the town through the funding. So if anybody has, anybody in the committee has any questions? Anybody has any questions?
The last committee meeting, we spent some time talking about Chapter 70, Chapter 70 reform, give you a bit of a primer on it, and this is what's, what we're, what's hope would happen if that goes through the legislature.
So I'll be looking for a motion to support this as it's written.
Make a motion.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to mention before I start to, Jackie Abrams cannot be here tonight due to a work conflict commitment. Forgot to mention that when we started, so moving on, principal report, Mr. McCarron.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle, and members of the school committee. I have two items for you tonight, the first of which has to do with Project 351. So each year, Abington Middle School is asked a representative to take part in Project 351. Project 351 is a statewide organization that celebrates youth leadership and community service on Massachusetts middle schools. It's actually started by DeVal Patrick, I believe, during his second year and introduced at his second State of the State address. Project 351 engages eighth grade ambassadors in each of 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts in a 12-month program of service learning, leadership development, and civic engagement. Ambassadors are diverse in all ways but one, they share Dr. Martin Luther King's criteria for a life dedicated to service. And they use the quote, "A heartful of grace and a soul generated by love." This year, the faculty at Abington Middle School chose eighth grade student Hannah Terrell as a student that best meets the Project 351 selection criteria. We're proud to have her here as our Project 351 representative. I'd like to introduce English teacher, Ms. Tomlin, who is working with Hannah on her service project, and we'll be introducing Hannah tonight.
Hello, I'm Megan Tomlin, and I'm a seventh grade ELA teacher at the Abington Middle School. I've been advising Hannah on her Project 351 experience, but to be quite honest, she's been gracefully leading and taking charge like a seasoned pro. So just to give everyone some background on how Hannah came into this well-deserved ambassadorship, the faculty and staff of AMS were tasked with selecting an eighth grade student in good standing who exemplified the following: kindness, the quality of being friendly, generous, considerate, and warm toward all others; compassion, the instinct to care deeply about others through greater understanding of their life story and circumstances; humility, the characteristic of being modest, especially when using one's power for the good of the community; and gratitude, the quality of being thankful, demonstrating appreciation and kindness with joy. Hannah's name came up almost immediately, and since her selection, she has taken this project head-on and with an unparalleled enthusiasm and a genuine desire to serve others. And now Hannah is here to explain her service project and to tell you a bit about her Project 351 experience. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I am Hannah Terrell. So Project 351, we started off on January 19, which was lunch day, so we all went into Boston and went to Faneuil Hall where we met the governor and played some leadership games and activities. From there, we went to Service Village and made cards for veterans and blankets for some homeless shelters and, yeah. Now, in the spring, I'm doing spring service, which is a donation of clothing for children supported by Cradles to Crayons in less fortunate circumstances, is running, it started on March 18, and it's going to April 5. And we're looking for all different clothing and shoes for children in less fortunate circumstances. So in the year to come, this will finish on April 5, and then reunion for Project 351
I can tell you personally, I've been impressed not only with her work on this project itself,
ambassadors will happen in May.
but the way she's gone about it, leaving my office two weeks ago, 4:30 in the afternoon
After that, I will be working with Kristi Coombs and Ms. Tomlin for a fall service project.
on a midweek day, and she had organized a group of eighth grade friends, and they were
Alright, thank you.
creating posters and boxes and planning where the donation centers were going to be.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing.
So I'm gonna play a little movie for you. They've reached out to the Abington Police Department, they've reached out to, on their own, to Mrs. Minahan about sending out a constant contact district-wide. Like, what is the name of the two of you?
Hannah.
Sorry, Hannah. So she's put in a tremendous amount of work, and her efforts are showing in the amount
Yeah, it's Bitable, I think that's how you say it.
Bitable? of clothing donations that have already come in, so very proud of her.
Yeah.
Who's that? This is my. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I know she's not up here, but did anybody have questions that I can help you?
No, congratulations, great job, doing great work.
Also in your packet, you have an update from myself on leveling at Abington Middle School. We spoke about this last year as I presented the Abington Middle School Improvement Plan. So I provided you with a memo that outlines the work that's been done to this point, a summary of research, a snapshot of where we are as a school, and also some data about local schools, local middle schools, and where they stand as far as leveled courses go. I want to make sure to draw our distinction between leveled courses and accelerated courses. We do have an accelerated math course, and the distinction I feel is important to draw is that accelerated courses cover more standards in a given, more learning standards in a given school year than a leveled course. So what that would mean is our accelerated math courses in grades seven and eight cover the learning standards for grades seven, eight, and nine, and prepare students to attempt to take calculus at the high school level. Leveled courses cover the same learning standards regardless of the level. The real difference in our leveled courses is the expectation of independence and the supports that are placed in those classrooms and run by the teachers themselves. Abington, in the form of Fro Leo Middle School, six years ago, started down this path, and it was pointed out to me by a couple of teachers earlier today, it was really more than six years ago. When we really started moving away from this is when we started moving away from divisions where students were all placed together for a whole day. We know through the research and through experience that, or we believe, that heterogeneous grouping is where we should be for all of our courses. Right now, as of today, there are only two courses at Abington Middle School that are not heterogeneously grouped. Those are ELA and math at grade eight. ELA has a Level 1 and 2, math has a Level 1, a Level 2, and an advanced class, our accelerated math class. Our local search of local school districts showed only three middle schools that answered that actually had that same basic setup. The other middle schools do not level, although they may offer accelerated classes. The themes in the research spoke to the effect that leveling has on school-wide achievement, and that is that it showed little to no effect on overall school-wide achievement. The research continues to point to ability grouping being in place within classrooms. So in other words, teachers using a differentiated instruction technique of grouping students fluidly in the classroom, so students can move between levels in the classroom. I also provided you with a draft of the proposed program of studies change, and that would be the language for the grades seven and eight. Currently, it's split up between seven and eight, this is reflective of the current seventh grade language. I also have copies of research for you that was conducted by the group that worked on this. Mrs. Minahan has that, and we'll send that around to you if you'd like a copy.
Matt, is the, the three school districts that still do leveling, is that in here? Or can you let me know what they are?
It is. It's on the third page, it's Abington, Braintree, Marshfield.
Oh, I didn't see that, thank you.
I described ours, Braintree has major subject areas have what they call advanced and proficient, and Marshfield has ELA 1 and 2 for grades six or eight, as well as accelerated math.
Thank you. So, are, can we ask questions now?
Absolutely.
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes.
For people aware, I don't believe anyone's looking for a vote on anything like this this evening.
That was my first question, okay.
This is just sort of an update about what's going on, gives people more time to peruse and look at the information.
Yeah, I'll most likely be looking for a vote when I present the full program of studies. This is an update for you.
And when is that?
I'm hoping to present that next month.
Okay.
Matt, can you just, I guess, can you like give me like a concrete example of the way something's done now? Like if you were to take like one grade seven program the way it is now and how, and what it'll be if this, if this change happens? Grade eight, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure. If you look at some of our grade eight classes, I can talk to you specifically about a grade, grade eight math leveled class.
Yeah, okay.
Those classes are disproportionately full of, created with students who are high needs, special needs, ELL students, and students who require behavioral supports and supports outside of the general education curriculum.
Okay.
Under a heterogeneously grouped, that those students would have access to smaller groupings in the classroom. So if I'm the teacher in a class like that and I have 25 students, I can't take a small group and work because all of the groups require my constant attention. Where if you have a heterogeneously grouped coursework, you could have a group of students moving on an accelerated path, a group of students working independently, and a group the teacher is working with regularly on a smaller student-to-teacher ratio.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I'm trying, I guess, I'm trying to put it when I was, when I was in school. And just trying to like, think about like if there's a, like is, is it like an algebra, is like a pre-algebra, like how does, like, is everybody getting the same course of study?
So right now, they, they all get the same learning standards.
Okay.
So Level 1 and Level 2 learn the same things throughout the year.
Okay, alright, I think that helps answer it then.
That doesn't change.
Okay.
We believe all students should have that high standard.
Okay.
And that each classroom should, should seek independence in their learners and provide the steps that we need to take to do that.
I think, yeah, I think your statement there clarified what I was looking for.
Yeah, that's the really the difference between the accelerated and the leveled groupings.
Okay.
And we're not looking to remove the accelerated math class, that is there for a curricular purpose, that feeds up through 12th grade.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
So in a heterogeneous class, there's three different types of groups in the learning, like there's an accelerated group?
That's one model that the teacher could use to differentiate instruction within the classroom.
So what model do we use?
That varies class to class. There are teachers who run their classes in that way, and they might do that on Monday and Tuesday because what they're looking for costs for that Monday and Tuesday, but Wednesday may be a little bit different.
So are the teachers like trained in different ways to do this? Like, like if we're making the shift to like heterogeneous classes overall, like is there training for the teachers, like are they?
Sure. So one of the things we did this year was seek out some professional development for the staff members that are involved in this, and we've sent many of them out to, to coursework just for that purpose. In addition, we looked at, looking at our co-teaching practices, at seven and eight, at five through eight. Seven and eight has had co-teaching in place for quite some time. We brought in co-teaching professional development that met for 15 hours here in a coaching model, and also sent people to MSAA over the course of a day and a half, I believe, for direct instruction on co-teaching. And we'd look to continue that as professional development for the coming school years.
And I have one other question. So we have accelerated math, and now we're going to heterogeneous classes, why not are we doing acceler, is like an option accelerated ELA? Like, I know other towns, other districts have that.
Sure.
Doesn't look like we're going to that, why not?
So I had that conversation actually with Dr. Gonzalez, who's been working on this with us throughout the course of the last two years, and looking at the fact that other places do have an accelerated ERA, I spoke there about the possibility of looking at that as part of next year's improvement efforts. It's a possibility. We wouldn't be ready to go with that next year if we choose to go in that direction. The math, the impetus behind the accelerated math, and the reason you see that in middle schools across the state really is the curricular push, because math builds on itself, and in order to get to that AP Calculus portion in high school, you need to have completed this coursework before that. So this allows that track to exist, even though track's kind of a dirty word.
See, what do you?
Sequence, thank you, Ms. Michelle, the sequence exists.
Matt, what would you think, right now, if we were to move forward with the suggested change, that you, that would be our biggest struggles or obstacles for the staff?
So we talked, there are four staff members who currently teach leveled courses. So there are roughly 51 professional staff members at the middle school right now, so this change affects only four of them. And the challenge would be the same as those others faced as we move to heterogeneous grouping in those areas, and that would be to obtain the skills and the experience with differentiated instruction, so we'd focus on that.
So if we adopted this, say, May, would they be ready to go in August?
Yes, they've been working on that this year preemptively, absolutely. In fact, one of them has been presented at a couple of our student meetings, the methods that he's currently using, two of these teachers teach seventh grade and eighth grade, so they teach heterogeneously grouped and homogeneously grouped classrooms at the same time.
Thank you.
This is something that's been going on, you know, over years, and if you remember from last year's presentations, this was, this was the goal, and so I wanted to continue to update the committee as we went through the process.
You know, as you, many of you know, I was an elementary principal here in Abington, North Center, and Woodsdale, and then went to the Fro Leo the year before last. And the biggest impression I had when looking at this, because I'd been at the committee meetings and at the administrative team meetings, and we talked about heterogeneous grouping at the middle school, and of course, the elementary level is heterogeneously grouped, so it wasn't something that I was pushing. At the elementary level, we were already there. And listening to students going into a Spanish classroom in the basement of the Fro Leo, and standing there during lunch as they were going into their class, and hearing two students talking, one of them saying, you know, "I'm Level 2, it's okay." It's not okay for a kid to feel that way and forget to think that way. Every one of our students should feel like they belong in every one of our classrooms. And when we put that label on them, we're not giving them the sense of belonging that they need to really develop and grow as people. So that's my personal push for this. I kept that out of the memo, I really believe strongly in it, but I want this to be about what's right for kids and the judgment of the committee and the group that I work with.
I, actually, I don't feel quite that way, and I was pretty much in, you know, middle of the road, I did have difficulty in math, my daughter's in the middle of the road, so it's not like she's advanced and she doesn't fall behind, but I've never seen more people that need tutors in elementary school and middle school as I do now, the last couple of years, because they're in a heterogeneous classroom, I feel. Because I, I feel like it's maybe taking away from the people that are, you know, the kids that are more advanced, and then how do we know that those kids aren't maybe teaching or helping the other students when they could be learning more? And I feel like if, like I know, I have a few friends that have children that aren't quite advanced in math, and I think that it's more difficult for them when they're in a classroom, and they're seeing somebody that's super smart next to them and is getting it all, and then they're not, and then they're feeling sad because they don't understand as quickly as the person that's sitting next to them. I mean, that's just my side of it.
No, I understand, I understand your feelings completely, Wendy, I really do. You know, the town that I live in doesn't do, go to the extent that we go to with advertising the different coursework that we have, so, you know, I, my own children were, didn't get involved in the advanced math stuff, and I chose not to go push because I knew where they were and what they, they wanted to be, but I know my son, who's a senior right now and graduating, looks back and says, "Dad, I really wish I had, had been there." And I say, "Well, I really wish you had tried a little harder in sixth grade to get in there." But, you know, I think we don't know what opportunities our 12-year-olds are going to want when they're 15, and we can't predict what our 13-year-old children are going to become as 16 and 17-year-olds. And my goal here is to make sure that that opportunity and the opportunities to be the best that they can be are there for every single one of them.
I think that's great and awesome, but I think that's a little different when it comes to math, because I feel like math is just such a hard subject for some kids to really grasp.
And we're not changing the accelerated math.
Right, I understand that, but I just feel like, so if somebody, you said that in math at this time, in seventh, in eighth grade?
That was a Level 2 math course, class I described.
Okay. So how do, right now, in the seventh grade, we're doing Level 1, I mean, we're, there's, it's heterogeneous.
Correct.
So what happens in the classroom with the students that just, like how are they being grouped? So you said on Monday and Tuesday, they're being grouped, like where they'll work independently, some of them, and some of them will be with the teacher, but what happens on Wednesday?
Sure, that, and that's, that's the teacher's planning that provides what they're doing and how they're doing that.
But what's the other side of the example, like from your perspective? So if you gave us Monday and Tuesdays, what exactly would Wednesday be?
So when I go in, I look for what's being done in classrooms to differentiate instruction. So is there a different expectation of assignment? Is there a different expectation of output? Is there a different expectation of the number? And I can tell you, I walk through a classroom, and I might see on one child's desk that certain numbers are highlighted or circled, depending on the age level, and those kids know what that means, but the other kids that are around them don't necessarily know unless it's the child themselves has shared. So there are, there are a lot of different ways that teachers are differentiating what they're looking for, and sometimes it's grouping and sometimes it's not. You talked a little bit about having kids be the teacher, an advanced kid really teaching somebody who's struggling. That's never the goal, it never should be, that's not something that should necessarily be happening in our classrooms. We do look at collaborative grouping, and collaborative grouping does talk about students of different levels working together. And one of the articles that you'll see in there talks a little bit about academic discourse and the level of discussion that happens around this when you have a heterogeneously grouped class as opposed to leveled classes. That one's a little dry, but...
Is there like a two-side, like do I have to do my own research to find out how the other side feels?
No, it was, honestly, it was difficult to find articles that really spoke against leveling, not leveling. I did include one in there that at its face, and as far as the title, looks like it's going to be an article that talks about we should be ability grouping, and it does, but it talks about we should be ability grouping within an unleveled classroom, as I described. And that's really the push for those fluid groupings, not you're in this group in September and you'll be in this group in June, but within the classroom itself, you can move around, and you may, I may choose to work with this four sets of, set of people, and I might say next week that I'm bringing this person in and you're going out, based on where you are with the skill that we're providing and we're teaching them.
So it's kind of like RTI in the elementary school, what they were doing, but that didn't seem to work when they were pulling kids in and out, and like I don't know if you know about that.
So I, I can speak to the RTI that I ran at Woodsdale, and we went from a Level 3 to a Level 1 building under that model, and I really felt like that was a successful model.
So I feel like, so that it just makes it easier, I don't know, just the whole math thing just bothers me, because I have such, even today, an issue with math sometimes that, you know, just putting everybody in the same group, and I think of my friends, you know, kids, and how much difficulty they have, and it, just the math really bothers me.
But again, it's not, that's not going to be the case. Not in math itself, we still have the advanced.
Right, you have advanced, but still...
There's a good portion of students that take part in that.
Right.
Given year to year, depending on the students we have, we have one or two of those courses running, and that, that pulls 30 to 60 students out of that grade level grouping from that, which is a pretty significant number given our population.
Right. Alright, well, I think that just researching this will be good, and then...
And I'd be, well, absolutely, if you want to give me a call, we can talk about anything and look at anything else that you may find that I overlooked. If I did, I apologize.
Awesome, thanks, Matt.
Another question, just a comment, but the, how was the response to doing this, as you said, you know, for the, for the, you know, parents, like Wendy thinks, how has the response been so far for, because we've already done it in some of our programs? What's the response?
Sure, I, I don't get any requests from parents for, to level grade seven at all. The only leveling discussions I typically have with parents are parents whose kids have been placed in Level 2 and would like to be in Level 1. And I tell you, I err on the side of agreeing with the parent and saying, "I'm happy you want to push, and let's do it."
And the other thing, just a comment, I don't think it's a bad thing when we're in a heterogeneous group and you have students that have greater abilities, helping students that aren't quite at that mark, because it's, you're never too young, I think, to be able to establish like a mento, a mentee relationship, and it's, I think it's a good learning experience for our students.
And there's, there's an old piece of research out there, and I don't have it, it's something that I remember from when I was first in college, you remember like, it goes something, 10% of what you see, 20% of what you hear, and it goes up, and you remember 100%, 100% of what you teach. But I'd never want to stand in front of any group of children, parents, school committee members, or my own family, and say that I expect an eighth grade student to be a teacher in the classroom.
No.
But to, but to assist in a group and have the idea that kids can learn from each other. I taught fifth grade in West Bridgewater, and when I taught that, we had the Everyday Math Program, and we had leveled math classes in grade five. I had a group that was referred to as the low-low group, which should never have been referred to as that, and kids hear those things. So I had a group of 10 students who would come in my classroom every day. We would get through four, four of the 12 units in the Everyday Math Program, and we went to a heterogeneously grouped math class, which meant that I kept the majority of those kids who were already in my homeroom, we only had four homerooms in the grade level. And the following year, we got through Level 10, and part of that was the ability to have the discourse with model students, and I had students in that group that finished Level 12 and were on to, you know, stuff that I really worked hard to try and find and challenge them without jumping to grade six early in the school year. So my personal experience with this was that the heterogeneous group, even though it was 25 as opposed to 10 students, was more effective for those kids.
Do you think it's more beneficial for the lower achieving kids versus the higher achieving kids in this type of group, or?
I do, I do, because...
So what about the higher achieving kids, like it, it's not benefiting them as much? Like could they be pushed more in, than their kind of...
Sure, the, the goal of any differentiation strategy is not just to support those students who need support, but also to push those kids who are really functioning at a high level further. We should be challenging all of our students.
Right, and that's the teacher's responsibility to figure out who's at what level. I mean, we do peer models in our pre-K, I mean, we start, so it has to be something to that research.
And the teachers use ongoing formative assessment, you'll walk around and you might see teachers with clipboards in their hands, and they're checking off things, or looking at homework assignments that are designed to give them a quick look into what students understand about a particular skill, and they can use those to differentiate the groupings themselves, so it's not always, if you ever had the experience of the Bluebirds and the, you know, it's not always that, that's not what we want to do.
Matt, to use grade seven as the example, because, and I think you wrote...
We only had four homerooms in the grade level. Uh, and the following year, we got through level ten. And part of that was the ability to have the discourse with model students. Um, and I had students in that group that finished level twelve and were on to, you know, stuff that I really worked hard to try and find and challenge them without jumping to grade six, um, early in the school year. So, my, my personal experience with this was that the, the heterogeneous group, even though it was twenty-five as opposed to ten students, was more effective for those kids.
Do you think it's more beneficial for the lower-achieving kids versus the higher-achieving kids in this type of group, or...
I do. I do, because...
So, what about the higher-achieving kids? Like, it, eh, eh, it's not benefiting them as much? Like, could they be pushed more in, than their kind of...
Sure, the, the, the goal of any differentiation strategy is not just to support those students who need support, but also to push those kids who are really functioning at a high level further. We should be challenging all of our students.
Right. And that's the teacher's responsibility to figure out who's at what level. I mean, we do peer models in our pre-K. I mean, we start, so, it has to be something to that research.
And the teachers use ongoing formative assessment. You'll walk around and you might see teachers with clipboards in their hands and they're checking off things, or looking at homework assignments that are designed to give them a quick look into what students understand about a particular skill, and they can use those to differentiate the groupings themselves. So, it's not always, um, if you ever had the experience of the Bluebirds and the, yeah, it's not always that, that, that's not what we want to do.
Matt, to use grade seven as the example, because, and I think you wrote it here, but I just can't remember right now, so I'm just going to ask you.
Sure.
Um, if you find, so, if you find somebody in the non-accelerated class for math that is performing above and beyond, um, how do you move them up? Eh, eh, is there a, a process or a way to move them into an accelerated? Or vice versa, I guess, but I think I was more going the...
Sure, we look at, um, current performance, and usually every year, there's at least a few students that that's suggested for, so it's a conversation with the family because it's important with that age to make sure that the parents are on board with that, too. And then we may provide some additional material for the student to look at over the summer because there are learning standards that they haven't been directly taught.
Yeah.
And then we can provide some assistance in the fall to get them up to speed with where they need to be. Obviously, it's easier between seventh and eighth than it is between eighth and ninth. I believe, I can't speak to Abington High School, uh, but I know Middle Bar High School, where my son goes, there are students who would take a double math. So, you would take the ninth and tenth grade, ninth grade, and that would put you back on that sequence to be there.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Your...
Any other questions?
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Up next, uh, report of the Subcommittee's Business and Finance Subcommittee, Lisa and myself. Uh, so, we met, uh, we met Lisa and I, along with Peter and Felicia, got together last week, last week, to go over a, um, an updated, updated view of our fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget. Um, on here, you'll see, you'll see basically the, the biggest change in, I don't have the original in front of me, so just somebody stop me if, or if they know. Um, this, there's a second page behind the budget that gives the staff requests, and the, the original budget had all of those in there as, um, new positions. This updated budget now cuts off where the first box is, and the second box is where, um, we made the determination that to get a budget that was more realistic, um, we had to decide which ones we felt provided the most based on, some were based on, like, class size, keeping things under thirty or thirty-five, and, uh, legalities involved some of these as well. Um, some of the ones, I believe the circuit breaker estimate increased, so more money coming back. Um, and the only other note I have is specialized tuitions. That number stayed the same, and as we get closer to the end of this week, beginning of next week, we'll have a much more accurate number because it cuts off on April first. Um, I don't know if anybody had any questions, Felisa or I, or anybody?
Are you on the set?
No, not yet.
I know one of the questions I had asked at the meeting is, you know, the new proposed staff for the new, it was like middle school and Abington, and high school staff. So, I was just wondering, you know, how, why just middle school and high schools? I don't know if Peter or Felicia want to speak more to the answer of that, it was something I'd asked.
So, um, it was a good question, and, um, it's good, it's good that we share it with people. Predominantly, the staffing request this year is at the secondary level, but as a district, please remember that in the last two years, we've added a hundred and seven students to the secondary level. Previous years, um, you've added elementary teachers to get our class sizes to the mid-twenties, um, to the, some, some breach twenty-seven-ish, uh, once we get towards the grades of five and six, but at the lower elementary, they, they got smaller as you go down. And so, um, it was a struggle for us to get those class sizes down. We did that. We also served, um, the needs of the Special Education Department at the elementary level of the last couple of years. And then, since we've had such great successes at the secondary level, we have large classes, as we've talked about, that are staying in Abington. Instead of going to social vocational or opting for private educations, um, in other places, they're staying here. So, if we don't make these moves at the secondary level and make those our priority, we will have English classes that breach thirty students in an high school, in our high school English classes. So, that's why the priority is, that's why the priority is there. Similarly, more students means that there are more educational plans that need, um, uh, the staff members to provide good service and fulfill our obligations to those students because those are spread throughout the entire high school schedule. So, there's a special education teacher there, um, extending the time in this library and supporting the one-to-one initiative is, is the library media center, uh, person, and then we've been talking quite a bit about, um, social emotional needs. Particularly at our, at our secondary level, we see the most need. You could have an adjustment counselor at every grade level in any school system in America, um, but we, we put the priority here at the secondary level in this, in this budget for the reasons that I just described. So, heading towards, um, town meeting, if I could just add one more piece. So, um, the previous budget proposal we gave you was five point nine percent at the, at the January meeting. Five point nine percent is not feasible. The one you have tonight dials us down to three point five nine, and it shows you our priorities. Um, there's still a deficit in the town, um, compared to, um, our budgets, so this potentially would need to be reduced further to get, to get to a consensus budget. Doesn't mean we have to have a consensus budget, but it's good to have one if you can have one. Um, three point five nine percent is a healthy increase for a school department. Um, we are advocating for as much funding as we can for our school system. Um, at the same time, we all need to remember that Abington needs, um, police officers and firefighters, and, and hopefully, again, we come to a consensus so that, so that, um, we go to town meeting with that consensus. So, it's not possible for us to have everything we want. We have to prioritize this way, um, and we'll continue to work toward that as we approach that May town meeting.
Thank you. Uh, next up is part of the budget process is our, um, proposed capital plan for items of the Abington Public Schools. Um, can let me, let us, again, Lisa or I know if any que, any questions, we discussed this as well last week. When we're done, I would like to look for a motion to approve this, the capital plan as presented, or an updated one if somebody has one, um, to go forward with, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. What happened to the, um, the chairlift for Frollo that used to be on this?
So, we, we got funding for the Frollo chairlift as part of the capital plan. We, um, have actually been working with an architect, uh, to have something installed at the Frollo. There's, um, some variances that we may need to get to have it inside, having it inside the building, but we do have that funding. It's being held aside.
Okay. And then, um, a couple of years ago, like, when I started on the Budget Committee, what was the new roof estimated cost at that point?
Uh, it's, it's, we've held it about one point four million, which is the estimate that we have, um, from the roofing company. That hasn't changed.
Awesome. Thanks.
Something that someday we'd be able to go out for a green repair. You were probably about to say that.
So, MSBA, we talked about this in previous years as well, MSBA has an accelerated green repair project, which is, um, for windows, doors, boilers, roofs, uh, to repair, uh, to repair in schools. And we would go out with MS, try to partner with MSBA to have the roof repair, uh, replaced at Woodsdale, with the, with MSBA reimbursement between fifty and fifty-five percent.
Hmm. Okay.
And just commenting on the, um, chairlift, it's, um, getting variances, takes quite a while, and it's, we're just being diligent about that process so that it actually, the chairlift saves a lot of money compared to putting an elevator.
Right.
At the Frollo, which would be complete overkill.
So, how long have we had this money set aside for, for the chairlift?
I believe it was two town meetings ago.
Okay. So, when is the timeline that we expect that would be done? Because you guys are obviously staying at the Frollo.
So, so currently, the chairlift that's in there is working.
Right.
If someone needed to get from the street level up the five stairs into, onto the main level, it does work.
I can't believe that. It's still going.
It does work.
Okay.
So, we do have access. It's not the access that we would like to continue.
Right.
So, um, s, like I said, we are working with an architect. Um, if, there's actually a beam is part of the problem, that, so there's a beam in the stairway that doesn't have the appropriate head, um, head clearance if someone was in a wheelchair. Um, so, we're working with the architect to go back to old design plans of the Frollo from nineteen thirty-two to see if there's another way to...
Thirty-eight.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, thirty-eight, um, to see if there's a, something else with, that we could do with that beam, or the variance is another possibility. So, you can't get the variance without architectural plans, so that's why we're in the architectural plan phase right now.
Okay.
And there has been, we have explored the, um, possibility of an exterior lift that would go from ground level up to where the front doors are. Um, that didn't, isn't, didn't seem cost-effective or a, a long-term solution. Um, same thing with an elevator, uh, not a long-term, uh, an overkill solution for that. So, it is absolutely something that's in the works. Uh, it unfortunately takes a lot of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a motion to approve those.
Okay, uh, anybody second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Um, up next, Social and Emotional Learning Subcommittee, Jackie and Lisa, the mission statement, so Lisa, I'm gonna have to pass one over to you and however you want to handle.
Okay. So, at our last meeting, we finalized the establishment of a mission statement for the, um, Social Emotional Learning Committee, and maybe, I might just read it, I don't know if everyone has it in front of them, I just think it's an important statement, um, for everyone to hear. "The Abington Public Schools recognize the positive impact of social emotional competencies on academic success and personal fulfillment. We will strive to help our students develop the core social emotional competencies of self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Our staff members will model social emotional competencies throughout the school day and prioritize trusting, respectful, and caring relationships with students. Teachers will cultivate culturally responsive classrooms where students feel a sense of belonging in order to promote self-acceptance and individuality. Administrators will engage the entire school community in creating a positive climate that reinforces social emotional learning in the values of kindness, celebration of diversity, and collaboration. Parents are understood to be essential partners in the work of developing students' social emotional competencies, and the district will make resources available to parents on these topics to support our ongoing partnership." So, that's our mission statement that we developed, and we're still continuing to look forward to frame different, um, actions and programs within the district. We're looking to align, like, social emotional learning from building to building, so whether you're a fourth grader or a ninth grader, that, you know, the same, you know, policies and actions are relevant to every, all students. Um, and we haven't really established programs and, and we've, so it's still in the works, we've only had a couple of meetings, but we're making good progress and things are going in the right direction.
James had, James has done some of that, do you want James to share?
Yeah, James would be great, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, um, yeah, I guess to share some ideas, um, just to build on some of what Lisa, uh, Lisa was saying, is that part of our putting together a mission statement was to just be very specific that we, as a district, want to manage the social emotional experiences of our students. Because historically, and this is true of all school districts, but, um, the social emotional lives of students were just allowed to develop as they would. You know, and school district would intervene if things were going the wrong way. But instead, we want to be proactive in saying that, you know, this is a priority for us, and we're going to make sure to provide professional development for our staff, um, experiences for our students, and resources for families, so that we can all kind of come together and get the best, um, outcomes for students. So, that's just, um, a little bit more on the mission statement. And just a few other ideas that we sort of tossed around as a group is just, um, to step back, we, we unpacked, um, a presentation that was given to our middle school staff by Jerry Goldberg, a former superintendent of Natick. And he had gone through, um, a number of tools that teachers can use to, um, uh, just promote acceptance in the classroom and, um, social emotional growth for students. And some of those things were, like, co-creating norms in a classroom so that everyone would be very clear on what expected behavior is and what would be a violation, and also just strategies such as, like, a red card when, when kids are violating those norms, so that it wouldn't call attention to them, but they would be reminded of that their behavior was out of, out of compliance. And so, where that conversation went is that our buildings really should rally behind a few expected, eh, 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 a few techniques to be used in all classrooms, um, so that students would, so there'd just be more predictability, and we're just making sure that students, that teachers truly are addressing, um, the social emotional lives of students. So, a lot, um, up to date, up to this point, teachers have really had a lot of autonomy to decide how it is that they're developing the social emotional lives of students, and they've done a nice job. Um, but we're saying that this is so important to us that we really want to look at it a little bit from above and say, hey, you know, perhaps we should insist on, on teachers in, incorporating a few, a few of these elements. Um, and we also just talked about the importance of just some, like, off-the-shelf, research-supported social emotional curriculum. Um, some of it can feel a little, um, kind of prepackaged and, and rigid, you know, like just sitting in the front of the classroom and teaching, you know, expected behaviors, unexpected behaviors, and what anxiety is. At, at first, it feels a little, um, inauthentic, but you realize that not all students really develop this knowledge, and this can kind of be a blind spot, oh, a, a blind spot for a number of students, so it really is important that we are teaching, um, some of these strategies. And, um, uh, the preschool recently has made some progress in this area, in that they put in order for the second-step curriculum, which is, uh, which Castle says is one of the most research-supported, um, um, curriculum materials for social emotional programming. So, there's, there's some other ideas we shared at the, at the meeting. Any questions or thoughts?
One other thing, if there's no other questions, I just want, didn't know if you could maybe update about the survey that we talked about at the last meeting and with, what the status of that is.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, yep. So, that is, that's actually rolling out this week. So, we have a meeting, uh, with our principals and, uh, Sherry tomorrow, where we're just going to talk about the, um, um, how the principals are going to ask staff to participate. Um, so that email will be going out to staff, um, this week, and then it'll just be posted to the, um, the website this week as well. It was, um, the thought was, you know, maybe yesterday, the day before, maybe tomorrow, so it's, it's just been something that, that's been on deck, and we, we've got it all set in constant contact, we just have to kind of have the letter and put it on the, on the website. So, that'll definitely be out this week, the survey. And just a reminder, so, um, community members will be invited to participate in it, staff members will be invited to participate in it, and we'll have, um, some seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth graders participate as well.
Great. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Uh, next, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Shaper?
So, the first item I have for you is, um, an update on the Beaverbrook Elementary School principal search. I think, I think you're aware, and you've got this in your packet, and I, I'm going to read eighty percent of it, so I apologize. Um, I'm pleased to, uh, share with you, oh, you don't have it in your packet.
No, we don't, we have it.
You're about to get it. I have one.
Thank you.
Um, so, we did a paper screening, we had, um, a committee interview individuals, um, we did site visits, we did finalist, we did a-site visit, we did a finalist interview, we did reference checks, we had the candidate come here, and then we had the final appointment. Um, members of the committee of, of people who, um, helped us with the screening process and the first round of interview were, were Chris Coyle, Nancy Clancy, Mary Ann Dankies, Jonathan Hawes, Jen Jacobs, Parla Manasis, Kate Minahan, Felicia Michella, Pam Neely, Carrie Ronzio, and Ashley Trigot. And I really want to thank them, um, for the work that they did with us. We ended up with, uh, two candidates, um, who, uh, people felt, uh, that they were comfortable with. We, we dug deeper into the process that I described, and so I'm pleased to announce to you, and you couldn't be here this evening, that, uh, Chris Basta has, um, agreed and, contracted with us for the coming school year to be the Beaverbrook Elementary School principal. Um, he received his Bachelor of Arts degree at Fairfield University. He went to Sacred Heart, where he earned his master's degree. He is currently at the University of New England, receiving his, uh, doctorate in, in education. He's been an assistant principal in Redding, at the Redding Elementary School in Redding, Connecticut, uh, which is a pre-K, which is a preschool through grade four building for the last four years. Um, he's been, um, involved in creating, uh, support protocols for students, for academic for students, for academic behavioral and crisis supports, as well as a comprehensive student support protocol to address academic behavior, behavioral and social emotional development. He also served as the Safe School Climate Specialist to implement the school's climate plan and address behavioral issues with restorative discipline and peer mediation techniques generated and generated a school vision statement with the input from a variety of stakeholders. Um, we're excited about, about Chris. Um, I want to say we've already been communicating over the last couple of days, at least a half dozen times, about a, about a number of different things. He's going to come to, um, because he's already engaged in Abington and, um, our life here, even though he's got responsibilities in, in Redding. Obviously, we want to make sure that he's able to, um, attend to those children that need him there, um, and borrow from him as much as we can until, until, uh, he comes here full-time in, uh, July first. So, um, what else do I want to mention to you guys? Slipped my mind. Oh, um, he's coming to the next school committee meeting. He's coming, uh, the first of May to the Beaverbrook. So he can come to the PTO meeting, the school council meeting, and the faculty meeting. Um, and then there'll be other points, uh, that, that he'll be here. Um, because another announcement I have for you is that, uh, you're probably aware that the assistant principal, Lori Gober, um, has, uh, will be finishing out with us this school year and then going to another district. So we have for you a search process that's going to look very familiar to you, to the couple that we've been doing recently.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, uh, we, we've already advertised. We want to establish a screening committee the week of April first. Uh, we will meet. We want to involve Chris Basta in this process. Um, as a member of that interview committee, we'll be interviewing candidates the week of April twenty-second. We'll do a finalist round of interviews on the twenty-ninth. And then I, and I hope I'll be able to bring a candidate to you here for the, the meeting of the twenty-first, the week, the, the May meeting, the May school committee meeting. Um, if something slows us down or this timeline changes, this is a, this is a guideline because we need to be, we need to be nimble. Um, but this is, this is the plan. I'd like to, um, involve, if I could, um, uh, two elementary staff members, two elementary parents, and a school committee member, if people were interested in, um, if there's someone who's interested in serving on this group. Um, I, I do believe we should go to the school council there for, start there when we're looking for, for building participation. Um, and, um, I don't want to answer any questions that people might have. It's a lot, a lot happened very quickly over a couple of days there.
When you, um, use the elementary staff members, will they be different than the ones that you just used for the principal search?
We might be running out of staff members.
(laughing)
I, I do like, uh, asking someone else to serve who hasn't served, and, and if, if I can find that. But if not, um, then I would use repeat members if I had to.
Oh, yeah, I would ask if, a preference would be you have to get somebody different, but if you can't-
Me too.
You can't. So I understand. And, um, I can, if any, I mean, if anybody wanted to volunteer right now, if not, we can talk about it. I can let you know somebody from the school committee. So-
When I say I'm running out of staff members, I just mean on the school council.
Right.
I like to start there. So I'm sure the, it's a very engaging staff. I know there are going to be a lot of people want to involve themselves. So I'll, I'll wait and for the committee to let me know who may want to-
Okay. Yeah. His secretary isn't here, so, okay.
My, um, the next item I have for you is consideration of next year's school calendar. So, um, this starts our year the way we started this year. This puts a half-day professional development day with no students in March, on March third, in case there's a, uh, in case we have to house an election at this building. I don't know that that will be what people will ask for. Um, added the dates for the ending of kindergarten and the early education program. Um, when, if people have questions, I'd be happy to answer. We're looking at the, the parent conferences that we talked about last time, committee. Um, really, uh, all the parent conferences, but I believe it's the parent conferences at the Beaverbrook were the ones that people had the most question with in terms of their timing. So what we're doing is, um, checking in with the school councils to see if they want to weigh in and give us some input on that. Having said that, that's, that's not a part of this calendar in terms of the committee approving, um, the dates for school. That's more of what this is, um, rather than events at school.
I didn't notice any, but is there any change, anything changed from when we looked at it last month?
Don't think so.
Okay.
Just adding the kindergarten.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things we were, we had in a previous version that's not on this one was there were some Wednesday professional development days that make Wave Week Wednesday incredibly confusing, difficult. So that, these are not there. So, but I don't think they were in the last calendar either.
Can I ask a sidebar question about Wave Week Wednesdays? What, what, so they're set and they're on the calendar. What designates when they get canceled?
I'm not aware.
Yeah.
I mean, other than, obviously, weather, but-
No, I mean, we're in school. It's just it's been canceled.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it.
I know they canceled this upcoming one because of the impasse.
Yeah. I'm just, yes.
Yeah.
Random question, just when you mentioned, will you please? Could be answered.
All right. If I'd be looking for a motion to approve the calendar as presented or any other motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next piece is, um, asking for you to approve me to be your representative of the board of directors. It's not a paid gig. It's something I do to watch our interests and for our, our spots for kids, work we do there.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, um, my last item for you is the community support action goal. I'm not going to read it to you, I promise. I just want to highlight a couple of things to you. Um, it was important to me to, to update this to make sure it was reflective of what was actually going on. And that's most of the changes you see. Um, there's a couple of things. I'm, I'm, I'm proud of a lot of, of all of this. Um, but there's a couple of things I want to highlight that I'm especially proud of. Especially, for example, our special advisor, our, um, Special Education Advisory Council, in terms of that's status, that it exists. It's an active group. And, um, we're working so successfully with the CPAC. Um, the, the next one that follows is, um, on, on page two. I scratched, I scratched tracking the graduates and use their success stories to promote the success of the schools. We're still doing that, but we were using a program that was fairly expensive. It was a couple of thousand dollars. It was done every other year. It's, was futuristic and it was not ineffective. It was not a, it was not a good expenditure of money. So I felt like if we weren't, if we weren't, if wasn't this institutional piece that we were doing to this high level with this, with this company, um, I didn't feel it was appropriate to keep it on the chart. That's not, again, that's not to say we're not interested in keeping up our graduates. But what this did was this found them. This sent them a survey and then they would fill out the survey. And we didn't get good participation, I think. No, no fault of our kiddos when they graduate, but we're in the rearview mirror at that point. They're just filling out another survey for Abington. So, um, I'm also proud of the publishing that we're doing with the, uh, with Abington Cable. We have a cable, uh, studio. We are working hand-in-hand with them. And we have a member of that crew at the end of the table, right, Cam? We have, we have our, you're a member of the Abington Cable helping us publish things?
Oh, I occasionally help out.
And you do impressive work there and I'm proud of that work. Um, so that's reflective in this. Um, other things like our anti-bullying club, uh, reading at the Beaverbrook, um, the intergenerational activities, having our high school students complete independent study courses at the pre-K. Um, they may go on to be a, a preschool educator one day. It's pretty exciting and we'd start, we'd have started there. Middle and high school students working collaboratively on the LE project with our, here at this building. Um, this building has offered us the opportunity to do more of that type of work. And I just think that there's a huge benefit to older students working with younger students because the older students always behave better when they've got little kids around. And the little kids look up to the older kids as role models. And it's just really great to see that interaction. So, um, there you have it. That's your update.
Thank you.
Um, reported assistant superintendent for business and finance, Ms. Michella.
Thank you. School building update. We're on time and I'm, no.
No, we're supposed to be ahead in time.
Everyone, we're ahead in time. Um, I just have actually one update. There's been some questions about the fields and the field use. The front field, which is, I always forget the direction, but the one directly in front of the building has been, um, turned over to the school department. So we can use that field now. Um, that can be used. They did have to do some additional, we did site work and drainage work. Kind of the hill part of it is, um, we, we have to do some more growing of grass, but the, the, the field itself is available for use. The side field that you pass when you drive into the driveway, that is not available for use yet. That has not been turned over to the school department yet. We, um, in the fall, it wasn't ready. There were still areas that needed to be reseeded and regraded. And that, that happened late fall. So now we need to go through another growing season, which is this spring. And late spring, early summer, end of June, early July, it will be, um, surveyed again by the, um, by the, um, architects to determine whether it's to where we want it to be. And at that point, it gets turned over to us and with, uh, available, uh, we'll be able to use that field as well. So front field, yes. Side field, hopefully summer, fall. Go to summer and fall.
Do we anticipate using, so the front field's had two seasons of growth, right? Isn't that what we needed?
Three seasons.
Three seasons. So do we anticipate using it this spring for recess and-
Correct. It can be used. Yep.
Yep. Okay. And how will the community request to use that? Do you know?
The fields, um, still go through park and rec.
Still, okay.
Good question.
Good question. So the, I'll just, let me just review that for a second. So, good, great question. Um, the build, the, in anything inside a school building or the, um, artificial turf fields are scheduled by the schools. The grass fields, um, both here and around town, um, are scheduled by the park and rec department. So you would put in a request with them.
Now, will the park and rec maintain it or will we continue to maintain it, especially where it's so new?
Um, we will not be maintaining the grass fields. That will be DPW. And, um, I will say, John Stone, the head of the DPW, has met numerous times with us and with the landscape architect, uh, walking the building, um, walking the site for what needs to be cut down when, what needs to be fertilized when, what needs, there's grasses that don't get, the no-mow grass only gets mowed once a year. Um, other grasses get, um, more often. So he's been very engaged with that process.
Just where it's a new field, I take that.
Yep.
Um, are they going to be lined by us or by the DPW?
DPW does the lining.
Okay. And then what about, um, I, I thought there was going to be something around it so that balls weren't just going in.
Not the field. No, not the front field. No, we put the, um, kind of guard rail-
Yeah.
Around it. Um, but there, there was not a plan to put a-
Okay.
Sort of meant to be a, a front lawn slash place for people to use for multiple purpose sports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're going on a new business establishing a next school committee meeting, or next three is the case maybe, uh, Tuesday, April twenty-third at seven PM, Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, prior to town meeting at six-thirty PM. And the next night, Tuesday, May twenty-first at seven PM, all, um, here in the library. Informational items, it's just a couple, there's, I just wanted to point out the Chester Mallette, um, nomination packets are available. Um, there's, it was added last year to add not only a teacher, but also a educational support person. So there's, um, two separate awards, one for each. You can feel free to nominate one or both of those. Um, nomination packets are due back on April twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. Can they be submitted to the schools?
Yeah, then they'll forward them to us.
Okay.
They go to the schools.
Can I ask one question? I didn't, I missed this. Where can they get the, the nomination packets?
They're online. They're on the website.
Okay.
I have some here tonight. And then they can get them in the school offices as well.
Okay. So if anybody missed it, school offices, they can get it, or they're available online on the website. Um, please, um, take the time, if there's a teacher that anybody feels has gone above and beyond, they want to nominate an educational support person, please take the time to do that. The more nominations, the better for all this, everybody involved. Um- Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the meeting that, before town meeting?
Yes.
Don't we usually meet alone or is that just how it ends up happening or?
The time is happening.
Oh, okay.
But it is open.
Okay.
Secondly, um, I just wanted, I want to mention, I had a parent talk to me about something and I was going, and Matt had to go, but, um, I just wanted to mention Susan Nash had talked to me the other day. So I just want to say a huge thank you to Katie Williamson for organizing the middle school ski trip for grade seven and eight. Uh, in January, thirty-seven students and five chaperones went to Pat's Peak for the day. The chaperones were Mr. Gorman, Mr. Butler, Mrs. Peruzzi, Mrs. Gelfano, and Katie. They open to do the ski trip again next year in January, twenty-twenty. And, um, just want to thank the school department and Mr. McCurn for being so supportive of the ski trip. So I told her I would try to recognize that. Um, do you have anything you want to add? Thank you. Just some dates to remember. This Friday is In Service Early Release Day, March twenty-ninth. Um, Wednesday, April third, Green Wave Boosters meeting here at the high school at seven. Wednesday, April tenth, AEF meeting at Town Hall at seven PM. Uh, Friday, April twelfth, Commissioner O'Reilly, Senator Keenan, and Representative Sullivan will be, have a Blue Ribbon Visit here at the high school. And Monday, April fifteenth is the start of School Vacation Week, but the Monday is Patriots' Day and all school offices and buildings will be closed. Um, uh, uh, our next meeting, as I mentioned, is Tuesday, April twenty-third. And, uh, Saturday, April twenty-seventh is the annual town election that's held here from eight to six P, eight AM to six PM. And lastly, Wednesday, May first, is Massachusetts Association of School Committees' Day on the Hill from eight-thirty AM to two forty-five PM. Looking for a motion to adjourn? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.